Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors to order. This is a call off. We have local teams.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Bagan? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Shabon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Can we have the invitation of Mr. Phelps here?
Certainly. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interversical District. And grant to this board and to the deliveries this evening in spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask from your name and amen. I'd also like to have a short moment of silence for one of our van drivers who passed away. Regina Hermsen, longtime employee of the district. Blessed Legionists.
To the light of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now hear from our student representatives, Mr. Seaver and Mr. Hoops.
Good evening. At the kindergarten academy, the children are settling in nicely with the routines of the day and are enjoying being introduced to both the pre-K and kindergarten academic programs. The children are enjoying their special classes with Mrs. Knoll, Mr. Mack, and Mrs. Rettino. Children are continuing to earn K coins and some have already earned ten.
At the Nolan School, September was a busy month. Tuesday, September nineteenth, was our back-to-school night. It was a good turnout. On Thursday, September twenty-first, we held a Book Prize Spirit Day. Teachers and students picked a theme for their classrooms and were judged on creativity. It was fun to see all the different ideas they came up with. Student council boasted our back-to-school barbecue on Friday, September twenty-second. Families had a wonderful time dancing to music, eating, and socializing with staff and friends. We closed out September honoring our students, the month recipients, who demonstrate the virtue of courage daily. The students were recognized during announcements and then received a prize for their accomplishments. We're looking forward to seeing what exciting thing October will bring.
At Norwood, our back-to-school night was a great success. We had several families come out and meet the teachers and Dr. Esposito. Home and school starts selling popcorn again on Wednesdays. Everyone is happy popcorn is back. Our life skills students sell pretzels on Thursdays every week. They're also starting out the coffee cart on Fridays. The staff is extremely happy that it's starting again. Our fall pictures were on Wednesday after report. Our students and staff looked extra special that day. Our eighth grade class sold moms as a fundraiser and it was a success. The moms were beautiful. On Friday, September twenty-ninth, our eighth grade class sponsored a back-to-school dance for our middle school students. Everyone looked fantastic and had a wonderful time. Our eighth grade class also had a car wash on Saturday, September thirtieth. The weather turned out perfect and we had lots of eighth graders washing cars. On Wednesday, October eleventh, we had the Norwood Fire Company visit our first and second grade classes. On Friday, October thirteenth, we held our third annual Fall Fit Festival. We had a petting farm, hay rides, a base game. There were several different activities for the students to attend and everyone had a fun time. Thanks, Mr. Mack.
Prospect Park School had a busy September, welcoming our students back into the building. We started off the year focused on reconnecting and setting clear expectations for a great school year. We have been celebrating our Perfect Planner winners weekly for our PBIS program in our middle school and had our elementary PBIS kickoff assembly. We had our first school-wide dress-up day to celebrate National Video Gaming Day. It was fun to see staff and students wearing their video gaming apparel. We had a great turnout for back-to-school night and enjoyed inviting our community back into our buildings after summer break. It was a night full of reconnecting and building lasting relationships that will help foster a great school year and partnership between the home and school. We would like to give a huge shout-out and warm welcome to all of our new staff members who have completed our team. We look forward to what October will bring at Prospect Park School.
At Tidicum on September fifth, we welcome back to our students and staff for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Special thanks to our home and school, provided our faculty and staff with lunch to help kick the new school year off on the right foot. We would also like to thank our custodians for their hard work over the summer to make our school ready for the new school year. This year, we have a few new faces here at Tidicum School, including Sarah Billio, the school psychologist, Ryan Cleary, a social studies teacher, Nicole Scavalo, emotional support teacher, Andrew Greve, building substitute, Brittany Conrad, building PCA, Beth Elliott, instructional assistant for special education, and Isabella Green, an instructional assistant for special education. Our students were able to enjoy a cool, sweet treat after a long day of learning on September fifteenth, when our home and school hosted a Kona's Water Ice fundraiser. What a nice way to end the day. Our annual Scholastic Book Fair took place during the week of September twenty-fifth to September twenty-nine. Students were able to browse hundreds of books and purchase items, including posters, pens, pencils, and bookmarks. Special thanks to our library assistant, Mrs. McLaughlin, and our many parent volunteers who made the book fair a success. Tidicum's back-to-school night was held on September twenty-eighth. The night was well-attended by parents and guardians. They had the opportunity to gather information from some of our community organizations, including Boy Scouts of America and the Tidicum School Association, organization. Our home and school had a fabulous display of baked goods and Tidicum school swag for sale. The night was a huge success for all involved. This year's Fall Picture Day was held on September twenty-ninth, and Tidicum students dressed to impress as they smiled for the camera. Our PBIS committee sponsored a number of fun events during the month of September, including Eagle Spirit Day, Student of the Month Awards, and Greeted Water Ice with the President.
At the high school, Picture Day was September nineteenth. All students were required to get their picture taken for their student ID badge. Our back-to-school night was held on September twenty-first, and we had a great turnout, thanks to all the parents who took time to come and meet their son or daughter's teachers. On Friday, September twenty-second, homecoming started on Friday afternoon with a fabulous pep rally and then a parade escorted by our band down to the football stadium that evening with the homecoming court. A big win for the football game that evening. Then Saturday was the homecoming dance. Congratulations to Tom Receiver and Julie Trainer, who were being crowned the king and queen of the homecoming court. October ninth to the fourteenth was PIAA officials appreciation week. Each official was given a gift from the athletics office at the games during the week. A bag, an Iowa's water bottle, candy, and an Iowa's slayer. We also took pictures with each and posted them to our Instagram and the PIAA district site. Field hockey, boys' and girls' soccer, and volleyball have all celebrated their senior nights. Cross Country will celebrate on October eighteen, and football cheer and band on October twenty-seventh. We will offer free physicals for winter sports on October twenty-fifth at the high school from five to eight p.m. Winter sports registrations is now open for girls' and boys' basketball, girls' and boys' indoor track, wrestling, and swimming dock.
That concludes our call of the place.
Thank you, both. We will now, at number three, recognize Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. At this time, I would ask Ms. Lambert to please come up. We are going to be sharing out some great news with our Tier One PBIS program. Rachel oversees this as part of student services, so she's going to take it over at this point, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share some great success happening in all the buildings in Interbar School District. So, positive behavior interventions and supports, otherwise known as PBIS, is something the district has done for quite a few number of years. But I will say that thank you to the board with the hiring of behavior managers of Shannon and Amanda. We are now able to have in-district coaches instead of using out-of-district coaches. We used to use the IU, but now we use in-district coaches. And with that, they have been able to solidify our Tier One and our Tier Two interventions here at Interbar School District, making the success that you will see in a few minutes. So, we, last year, for the first time ever, all six buildings at Interbar School District hit a hundred percent fidelity. And just to note that we are the only district in the county that has reached this level of fidelity across the tiers. They had the opportunity to present at the countywide PBIS forum. And last year, the coaches that we'll recognize in a few minutes, and this year in a couple weeks, they will also go to the PBIS forum up in Thresher to learn more about Tier One, Tier Two, and eventually Tier Three that we will bring to the district, but also to talk about how well Interbar is doing. So, how did we meet a hundred percent? We do still have a facilitator by the IU that is trained from the state to come and present surveys to the students, question the parents, question the teachers, see what we are doing throughout the year. So, each year, the building has to complete the surveys that are given to the parents, are given to the teachers, and all staff for that matter, and in some cases, the students, to see how we are doing. And with that, we are able to develop action plans that we implement year after year after year. So, the teachers meet in the summer to look at the TFI and to see what areas of strength we have, but also areas of need, and we are able to develop our action plan. Based on that action plan is what the school then works on throughout the school year to make sure that we are hitting the tiers and what the fidelity survey is looking for. It's a reliable instrument that has been used over time to guide most implementation and necessity use of PBIS. Oftentimes, PBIS gets the rap that it's just trinkets or toys or prizes. It's everything but that. So, PBIS is recognition of good behavior. How you do that is in your daily day interacting with the community and the students. It's also in your daily day within the classroom, how teachers are managing their behaviors within the classroom using positive behavior support instead of maybe always, you know, pointing out something that's not going right, pointing out what's actually going right. So, through PBIS, they say for every one negative, you should give at least five. We sometimes double that and say ten. So, before you give a negative, think about giving that positive phrase or congratulations to a student. So, this includes reviewing the data sources such as the meeting minutes. So, each month, the coaches meet with Amanda and Shannon, and then each month, each building meets as well with Tier One and Tier Two, sometimes bi-weekly, especially in Tier Two as students are meeting with mentors and checking in and checking out each day. We have been grateful as well from the board to have SWISS, which is our behavior management system. We are able to look at reports to see if there's a time of day or a location of the day where higher incidence of behavior are happening. And if that is the case, what can we do surrounding PBIS fidelity to make sure that we can address them? The Code of Conduct, which the board has approved and seen and it's also posted on our website for all parents, was implemented two years ago with the help of the administration. And it really is a clean and concise majors versus minors of how to, if a discipline occurs, what happens with that discipline. We're able to observe the environment as well as conducting the interviews. So, the person who comes around will say to a student, "What is PBIS?" And they define it, "What does it look like in your school?" And again, they define it, and that is all part of the TFI. Just some comparison data from twenty-one, twenty-two, to twenty-two, twenty-three. It is not as if we were not in good standing in twenty-one, twenty-two, but it is awesome that we have been a hundred percent in all six buildings in twenty-two, twenty-three. And again, that really comes from the coaches being able to hone in on what we were missing and how we could implement it more. And one of the pieces that we were missing was the parent input. And so, now we put out a survey every year to the parents to say, "What is PBIS to you? And what would you like to see PBIS in your building?" So, each building with their coaches did a fantastic job of putting slides together. And the buildings that are represented here today will definitely present, but, so Caitlin, if you'll be a second?
Sure.
Yeah.
Should I go up there?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Johnson. I'm the Tier One Coordinator. I think you've already had me. A picture here, we have our K coins, so this is our token that we refer to to award positive behavioral expectations in the building. We kind of revamped it a few more, so the bottom here, we now write the student. If I'm rewarding it, I would write my name, as well as the teacher of that student, so their homework class. And we rip off the bottom, we put it in a bucket in the office. That's our little treasure chest from Hermsen. And every Friday, Mr. Pollock will pull up three slips now and not only award the teacher, but the student. So, he has some old gift cards, Holstein, Delkens. So, it's not only incentivizing the teachers, but also the students to display those positive behavioral expectations in the building. Picture here, you see the Clifford pumpkin. We have some different community and family events that we've incorporated to reach the one-hundred percent fidelity with our TFI. We did a family book character event. So, students from Harsh pick their favorite book, read it with their family, and then create a pumpkin and bring it to school. Knowing that there is a family support across the board, we had teachers volunteer to do it with their class. So, that was really nice to all bring to school, and obviously, that's the Hallie's. That one was my favorite because I've been there. We're trying to bring back fundraising. This is my second year in the position, so I'm still learning more as I go from my colleagues. But we are starting off with Y-ties. I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with them, but it's kind of a way to cheat, which I'll tie wet shoelaces with fiber. So, they're like little springed shoelaces that don't need to be tied. Then you can put them in your hair if you want, as an accessory, or in shoes, you can put them in boots, sneakers. So, it's been really nice to have another way to collect funds and create other fun activities and events for our school. So, that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Thank you.
The Y-ties were a big seller at our school night.
I think you wore five of them.
I had one of the few sets for myself.
All right, one old and.
Very fashionable.
Lori?
Hello, I'm Lori Larder. I am one of the coaches that's one old and along with Stephanie DeAlonso. She is unable to make it tonight, but she wants to thank everyone for giving us this opportunity to present tonight. Our very first picture we have here are the PBIS kickoff. We are trying our best to get our student ambassadors involved because we feel that sometimes the students, they don't want to just hear from us. They want to hear from their peers. So, we felt that if we get our student ambassadors to help us in the beginning of the year, set the expectations, and then they model what the expectations look like. All the students went to various rotations. They went to the cafeteria, they went to the bathroom, they went to the hallway, playground, and they modeled for them how they should act and what the expectations are in each one of those atmospheres. It was amazing. I mean, they really did take to the kids, and now these kids are like superstars when they see them in the building. They're like, "Oh, that's that famous kid. We saw them the whole way out to here with us." Our second one here is Mr. Tubey. The kids named him last year, so no without Mr. Stube's, Mr. Tubey. How we do this is we have different increments here that the kids earn their buck pride tickets, and each time they meet the next level, the whole entire school stops what they're doing and we all earn an incentive. Some of the incentives could be extra recess, movie day, pajama day, not a whole day of movie, obviously, though. We've had a minute to win. We're doing like a minute to win it challenge thing. So, it does not matter if you did not earn one of the pride cards. Every single person is included because this is a group effort. The whole entire school is part of this. With that being said, though, if we did something like this and it was a pep rally forum, the kids who have their raffle tickets in here, we would pull their names and they might be the participants who come up and help participate in the activity we're doing. So, everyone is included, but those kids who did that extra steps to get the pride cards, they're the ones who are going to participate in the activity with us. With that being said, what are pride cards? So, our pride cards, we hand them out every day. Anyone in the building, custodians, cafeteria workers, teachers, assistants, anyone in the building. If you see the students are following the expectations, you give them one of your pride cards, you put your name on it, they put their name on it. They're then entered into a basket at the end of the week, and we have a basket for every single grade. Every grade, one winner is pulled on Friday. Mr. Stube does the announcements. And then a grand prize is also pulled. So, we have various prizes for that. Teachers can receive gift cards, reserved parking spots. The students can come down and pick prizes such as fidgets, food, t-shirts. There's so many different things. They're big on food, though. So, these are our buckets right here. Then we have, we do also teacher morale. Yes, PBIS is about students, but we also want to make sure the teachers are buying into it also, and we want to make sure we're building positivity for them also. So, every single month, we do a staff morale for PBIS. This one pictured right here, we did a make-your-own bouquet. So, not all of them are going out into the community or going places to celebrate. We just did something England olden, and it brought a smile to people's faces. Like, we all just brought in various bouquets, and we went down a row, and we made a bouquet, and we put it on our desk, and it just made you smile, and we walked into our classroom each day. And the kids commented on it also. We have our spirit day, so once a month, obviously, we have a spirit day where we dress down. And then we also have our student of the month when they demonstrate a virtue, and then they are recognized each month. Dr. Cabito, she will call the students up. We have an assembly. A little blurb is read about them from the faculty. Their pictures are rotating on our TV in the lobby, so it's not just like a one-and-done kind of thing. Anytime you walk through our lobby, it's a rotating PowerPoint that you consistently see the kids' pictures. So, they're being recognized over and over again. They feel like movie stars because they're on a big screen right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Rachel Flicker. I'm the school counselor at Norwood School and the PBIS coach. We use gold coins. Everybody uses something a little different. And these are some of our pieces that we have. So, elementary does a gold coin cart that gets up and running, and it's like a rotating store. The kids get really excited. And this was a middle school student who was running it for some second graders. So, there's a schedule, and they're all really excited to buy fidgets and prize bags. That's one of the big winners, is just a bag of a surprise. Those are really big sellers. Middle school does like a candy cart with snacks. That's a big seller. We've done various other opportunities. So, one time, we had a donut blow where students in middle school used their gold coins to purchase a donut, and they got to pick it off the well. We do trimester awards for our elementary students based on our core values of respect, responsibility, and safety. These are one of the, and then we invite parents to those assemblies, and it's really, really positive. We also give awards for like the best gym class, the best art class. So, kids love being a class that wins that award. Let's see, lunch with principal, that's a really popular reward. Three gold coins, you can get lunch with Dr. Esposito, Dr. Costa, or myself. Just today, I got three, group three different students who said they wanted to have lunch. So, that's really fun, and we really enjoy that. We just revamped this, a picture of our signage that we just got new signage because we changed our value. We picked up safety, sort of mirrors in kindergarten, because safety was a big concern, you know, our biggest issue based on our data. And looking, what else? We did a middle school reward trip. Students went bowling. That was well received. We did Minute to Win It, and eligible students were picked out with their gold coins. So, if you want to go in, you put in gold coins. That's your opportunity to play. We also did something similar for Pi Day, then tied it into the math for middle school. And then we just started pink points for meeting enough tier expectations. So, that goes in a raffle. And two students, grades one and two, were chosen, and two students, grades three, four, and five, to reinforce cafeteria expectations.
And just to note, so the coins, the dollars, or what have you, are stated from the expectations on the matrix. So, each building has a matrix. So, there are stated expectations all the way around the classroom, the hallways, the cafeteria, lining up for boss duty. And when you follow those expectations, that's how the awards are given.
Hi, I'm Kim Boswell. I'm the principal of Prospect Park School. I'm here to represent our building tonight with Caitlin Keely and Jamie Goebbach, both had something to do. So, some of the things that we do down at Prospect Park School with Amanda Hoffman's stuff as well is we give out P-bucks. So, instead of a coin, we use either blue or yellow P-bucks, and the students can earn them for showing positive, productive, and proud behavior. Some of the things that the kids love, just recently, we had our student of the month recognized. So, this year, we changed it up a little bit. We are going to start calling down our first and second through fifth grade. Middle school wasn't thrilled about getting called down to the office. So, we are, Mike Huvan and I are going into the classrooms with a loudspeaker and kind of in barding their middle school classrooms. So, they might be learning math last week, and we would just kind of pop in. We have this thing that makes obnoxious noises, and the kids got to earn our gift cards. Some of the things that we do is like back-to-school night, we have our big PBIS table, and we do a giving tree, asking for donations from parents, and they do participate in that. And then our helping team members, along with our specialists, always have a bake sale. So, you see all of our specialists, including Daisy. They're selling some bake sales. The little guys absolutely love the parrot, so some of us have been victims of being inside of that parrot, and we get to walk around. The kids love it. We get to go pop in again with our elementary kiddos. We pull random P-bucks out, and then the students get to earn prizes from our raffle bags. So, we take their feedback and make raffle bags. They get to go down and put it as if you were at like a fair, and you get to pick what ones you would like to put your raffle in. Something new that we started this year, we have principals two-hundred. So, the students that earn P-bucks throughout the week, we call, Mr. McGrath calls it over the announcements. They get to line up different age groups, and they get to come. And we have a board with literally up to one hundred. It's like a number chart. And the students get to pick a coin and whatever amount of P-bucks they have. They have three P-bucks, they get three coins, and then they get to put their name. And when one row is full, we pull those names, and then they get an additional prize. Some of the things that we're doing is this like disc drop, kind of like they're at a carnival, so we call them down, and then they get to earn either extra P-bucks, which they love. They get to do a gift cards or a fun treat. For our middle school students, we are, we have our P-buck shop. So, middle school students get to come down, and it's a big cabinet that's filled with things that they, their survey tells us what they want. Gift cards, dodgeball games against the staff members, cake ball games. They get to earn all kinds of things, pizza lunch with their friends. And lastly, we are very inclusive at Prospect Park, so we added that one. So, we really do make sure that all of our students get to get involved in the activities and the assemblies that we partake in. I think that's pretty much it. And then this one's really fun. The kids love earning the P-buck wheel, we call it. It's just a virtual wheel. We put all kinds of crazy things on there that they can earn, and they get to come and spin the wheel and figure out what they're earning. Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
My name's Shannon Staley. I'm one of the behavior managers for the district. So, I'm one of the district coaches for PBIS. I am going to represent and homeschool. Emily Paty is the Tier One coordinator, but she couldn't be here tonight. So, as you can see, there's a lot going on at Tidicum, so I will pick a few things to highlight. They do the student of the month, so teachers nominate students who exhibit the expectations for the month. Then every month, it changes. So far this year, they've acknowledged students for responsibility, kindness, trustworthiness, respect, and academic growth and achievement. Bucky the Pirate goes around.
Yeah, up there.
Yeah.
Up here. He's a fan favorite at Tidicum, so whenever Bucky the Pirate comes around, the kids really get to kick out of him. So, that's a special treat when he does. So, buff notes are for elementary students. They can earn the buff notes from staff members when they show if they're being respectful, responsible, and honest. Those are Tidicum's expectations. Tickets are pulled each week for possible rewards, and at the end of the month, for a bigger prize could be like Chick-fil-A lunch with Mr. Banning, for example. Then there is the buck shop, which is for middle school. So, middle school students earn Banning dollars because we wanted to change it up. They wanted to change it up a little bit for middle school since they like things that are quite different than elementary school students. They still have the same expectations as the respectful, responsible, and honest. And their dollars can be used to purchase things from the buck shop that can range from like pencils, candy, school supplies, t-shirts, headphones, fidgets. The middle school students kind of have a voice in that and decide what is going to show up at the buck shop. So, it gives them a little bit of buy-in too. And then last, but not least, the monthly rewards here. Here's a couple pictures of it. Each month, they pick a few students that earn the buck note. So, up here, they made like different houses for the holidays. Like I said, there's some nifty cuties with Mr. Banning, which is cute, hooky decorating. So, they wouldn't really get into it. They change it up every month, so it keeps it interesting to them. And so, that's it.
Thanks.
Mr. High School.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mr. Flitz, principal of high school. Brittany Hume and Tony McGrath, we're not able to make it this evening. They were coaches from last year. So, our big focus each week is on the pride bucks, because we had teachers nominate students for showing their buck pride that the other schools do. It's a big highlight coming down to the office after they see their face and then they announce on a classbook. This is our daily news bulletin that the video production team and students and classes put together. Then a picture's getting to the week's more, and we really celebrate that. Last year, we took it another step further with our students' student of the month awards, where the teachers would nominate based on a theme. So, one month might be respect, another one's responsibility, so basically, the PBIS themes. And they had their picture taken, and so we did a good job of making a nice big wall of these photographs and any news that came out. So, we really tried to highlight our students through PBIS last year. Anything going on in the community, because a lot of students are in scouts or in service organizations and doing a lot of good work outside of the building. So, we had a big wall that kept that up to make sure that the eighth graders coming in in August for orientation, the parents saw it, kept it up for back-to-school night, and we just started taking things down so we could refresh that. Last year, we transitioned to a different type of PBIS award over teachers. And as we said earlier, you know, we think of students a lot of times with PBIS. And as we said earlier, you know, we think of students a lot of times with PBIS, but it is the interwoven climate and culture that is PBIS that affects teachers, students, staff, everybody. So we were doing a teacher of the month award where I would select the teacher based on their work and commitment towards our school and students for the month. And it would be presented at our faculty meetings with a big wrestling belt. That was thought to be an inner borough wrestling belt. So there's a lot of pride there that hang in their classroom. Sometimes instead of the faculty meeting, I'd actually get filmed by a class scope entering a classroom, presenting to their teachers, the kids start applauding, it's really great feeling. But by the end of the year, kind of in a world that is PBIS where we had teachers select the teacher to receive that award instead of coming from me, so it's by their colleagues. And then finally in June, we had students fill out a Google form and advisory to nominate a teacher. So that was really cool too. And one thing that the PBS committee did, PBIS committee did was take all the little comments that even if that teacher didn't win the award, all those comments made it onto a sheet of paper to be posted by that classroom. Teachers found out to be, to really be worthwhile really at home, especially at the end of the school year. We do have an advisory period once a month where we have an extended homeroom for 40 minutes. And that's where a lot of our PBIS lessons and activities take place, partly during, with the class scope videos and also just different ACL emotional learning activities. So this year, we have a new coordinator and we've added some new members to the team. So we're looking forward to really be building PBIS even further. So we're excited about it.
Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight. As you can see, the coaches put in indoor personnel time. It's making this successful in the buildings, but it really does make the culture and the climate of the school a positive place. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you all for presenting tonight. We can't have enough positive reinforcement in this room. And I know the time and engagement and the love that you put into our children. That's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons that this district is as great as it is. Because of yous. Yous make this district great. So, thank you. Moving on to number four, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. Public comments. Please state name and address. Please keep your comments to five minutes. Members of the community are respectfully reminded that regard of public comments. Neither the board nor the solicitor will engage in a dialogue with the person or persons addressing the board. The board will listen and take all comments, questions, and suggestions under advisement. Where specific answers are requested, community members are invited to telephone, email, or use a postal service to communicate their questions to superintendent or board president. Who will respond or have appropriate school district personnel respond. We have one person signed up to speak tonight, Marsha Vanell.
Good evening, board members. I want to publicly and personally thank Mr. High School for, and Ms. Bernadette Riley for all the information they have so generously provided to me over the past few months. It's been very helpful. We really appreciate it. I've also made a thorough review of all the archived public meetings, minutes from 2019 to the current date, along with reviewing all the right to know information that Mr. High School has provided to me. And here's what I found out. The board held a special public meeting on July 12th, 2021 to purchase property directly adjacent to the Glendale Home Association in Glen Olden, which includes 250 homes. The meeting was advertised as a special public meeting, but the public didn't know about the meeting and couldn't attend because it was held remotely on a Zoom platform. This, to me, was not a public meeting. The Glendale Home Association was not notified of this meeting and the purchase of property. Also, this special meeting wasn't even advertised in the newspaper legal notices as required by Pennsylvania sunshine law, because I looked thoroughly many times and I couldn't find it. After the July 12th meeting, there was very little information provided in the board minutes about the Glen Olden purchase until October 20th, 2021. At a public board meeting where Mr. Evans mentioned that a meeting to discuss the Glen Olden property would be held on October 26th, 2021. This was followed by a very brief report in the November 17th, 2021 minutes regarding the Glen Olden property at a meeting that was held on October 26th, which was a committee woman, a women committee meeting, I believe, and not open to the public. Now, in summary, I'm summing it up. I really do understand that our nation at this point, when, back in 2021, had a very serious COVID problem. But they, there was, in my opinion, no excuse for the way the inner borough school district handled the matter of informing our homeowners of the purchase of the property right next to our homes and the district's intentions for the use of the property. Technically speaking, we are your neighbors. And you've held meetings without informing us. They weren't listed on the legal newspaper notices as required by the law. And these are rhetorical questions. I'm not asking questions for response, okay? So why was the July 12th and the October 26th, 2021 meetings not listed in the legal notice section of a newspaper for 2021 as required by the Pennsylvania sunshine law? These meetings should have been listed in the notices. And why didn't, why didn't you inform the residents about the July 12th, 2021 meetings when you bought the Glen Olden property? So we could have attended this meeting. It's just rhetorical questions at this point. There's been, in my opinion, no transparency here on this issue. And what else are you doing that will affect our homeowners? And in my opinion, I don't feel that you've been very neighborly. And I'm incredibly disappointed by this. And I'm sorry to tell you this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vanell. Appreciate your comments. Moving on, Mr. Evans, more the file.
Motion 5.1, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the inner borough board school directors held on September 20th, 2023 be approved.
Second, motion has been moved in consecutive. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all who is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries with zero. We will now hear from our solicitor, Mr. Hefield.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, members of the public. Our firm this month continued to assist with construction matters, both in Glen Olden and Prospect Park, as we move forward with renovations at the high school and with regard to zoning work, as well as tax assessment appeals, special education matters, and any other litigation matters that exist. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to number seven.
Motion 7.1, that the treasurer's report for the month ending September 30th, 2023 be approved.
Second, motion has been moved in consecutive. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries eight, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 7.2, that fund disbursements in the amount of $11 million, $213,475 and $0.74 be approved.
Second, motion has been moved in consecutive. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries eight, zero. Any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Moving on to number nine, the committee reports. Nine point one legislative update. Mr. Wolf, do you have an update for us, sir?
Yes, I do. Let me start by apologizing for not being in person for the meeting. Sometimes life gets in the way and I'm in Maryland for business. The legislative committee met on October 11th and I have a very long, eight-page update. I'm not going to read it all. I'm going to hit the pine notes and I'm submitting the whole update to be included in the minutes. First thing we have is the Department of Education calculated the index for fiscal years 2024 and 2025 at 5.3%. Once again, we had a special election in Allagana County recently. Lindsey Powell won that election. He was a former mayor staffer. There, the principal and the school boards association and three districts, including Central West County, Upper Darnville, are suing the principal and the Department of Education to stop the new requirement that schools offer services to students with disabilities through age 22. The new rule announced in late August that it settles a lawsuit brought on behalf of lower married students, challenging its presidency to change federal and Pennsylvania require. Although the federal law that students with disabilities have the right to receive services from schools until they earn a regular diploma or turn 22, Pennsylvania has been having students graduate at the end of the year that they turn 2021. So this is in the court now. Pennsylvania House has returned, has returned from recess. That has been addressed over $1 billion in unfinished state business and other key issues. Lawmakers also have yet to agree on a new date with the 2024 Pennsylvania primary, which they want to move due to a conflict with Passover. But they didn't tackle that last week. The House was tied last week at 101, 101, until the new representative was sworn in. So that should move quick. To the desk, reading my, all I've got to go over, the full legislative report will be included with the minutes and the high legislative meeting will be November 8th, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Moving on to nine point two, the Delaware County Community College, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The only thing that I have to report is that next Wednesday, there is a dinner for the school liaisons and any school board members and superintendents that are welcome to Delaware County Community College at 6 o'clock from any of the sponsoring school districts, from 6 till 8. We'll be doing a presentation, talking about enrollment, what's going on at the Pregrast Building, updates to the, to Delaware County Community College. After which, anybody, everybody else gets a chance to go home. And then I have a meeting after that with the liaison. So we'll be meeting with the new president at that time and getting to find out a little bit more about her at that time also. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Moving on to nine point three, Delaware County Intermediate. Mine is nine pages long as well. But what did he say? Mine's 10 pages.
One.
The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met bond October 4th, 2023. Approve a contract with Radner Township School for, Radner Township School for DCIU to provide Wilson reading program level tutors. Also approve a contract with Allagana Intermediate Unit for the DCI to provide comprehensive school improvement support for five Delaware County schools. Approve the Delaware County Technical Schools Comprehensive Plan for 2023 through 2026. Approve a contract with Haggard Township School District to provide onsite IT services. Now the fund stop. Approve 42 students and one staff in three adult chaperones to attend the Greater New York Dental Conference in New York City, New York on November 28th, 2023. Also to approve 50 cosmetology students and two staffs in three chaperones to attend the intermediate beauty school, beauty show for New York, in New York City on March 5th, 2024. The next school board, the next DCIU board director meeting will be Wednesday, November 1st, 2023 at 6:45. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to nine point four, Kaplan Community Community, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. The CIP held a virtual meeting on 9/25 at 6:30 PM. We had a, mostly an update on the admin building project work at Glen Olden, along with a two-week look ahead. And they spoke of, you know, the masonry additions and footings for walls and stairs. A lot of that, as you can see from Mrs. Riley's construction update, a lot of that is either completed or in the process. There were some challenges with the opening of school, with the sidewalk work and the asphalt surrounding the school. But thankfully, with everybody, with the school district's staff and the staff at Glen Olden, they managed all the children and teachers that didn't have the school without incident. It was a little nerve wracking at first, but everything went well, as I said, without incident. As far as the high school update from our engineers, the steel skeletal structure is supposed to start arriving between late October and mid-December. The building skeleton should be complete by the end of November. And with phase one, complete by the end of next summer. That's the auditorium addition and the front end addition. At least the exterior shells be constructed by then. And the, as I saw today, they're excavating on the front side of the building with the footers for the addition on the front and laying block in the rear for the cafeteria addition. So that's all seems to be on schedule. There was also a construction, a non-public construction meeting held on 9/28 at 12:30 that I attended. I try to attend them as I'm available, just as a fly on the wall to see what's going on with the various, the general contractor subs and our engineering fur. And then we also talked about a change order for field survey for the South Avenue Athletic Complex. So you might see something on the minutes tonight for that. The next, the next CIP meeting will be held virtually on October 24th at 6:30 PM. And that is about it. Like I said, if you get a chance, go ahead and read the updates the superintendent provides on the weekly construction. And it seems to be moving along quite well. As info, the asphalt, the finished asphalt work at Glen Olden should be sometime late November once they get all the heavy equipment out of the, out of the worksite. They didn't want to, they thought it would be more, it would be better to wait until the heavy equipment was out of there. So once they put the finished asphalt down, it won't keep an altar up by the, by the remaining construction activity. That's it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Evans. At this time, our student representative, it's going to be excused. You can stay if you like, but you can be excused.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number 10.
From the Office of Personnel, motion, that the following personnel actions be approved, 10.1 on page two to 10.17 on page seven.
Second, motions have been moved in consecutive. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all who is in favor, please say aye.
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 Apposed, motion carries eight, zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion with regret, request that the following retirements be approved. 11.1, Riley Scanlon, 12-month secretary at the high school with 32 years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective January 5th, 2024. Lauren McCross, a council receivable tax collector with 28 years of service in the district. Be approved to revise her retirement date from October 1st, 2023 to an effective date of October 13th, 2023. Aleene Pillroy, van driver for transportation with 19 years of service in the district. Be approved for retirement effective September 25th, 2023. And Mary Ann McMahon, van driver for transportation with nine years of service. Be approved for retirement effective September 20th, 2023.
Second, motion has been moved in consecutive. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would just like to, the years of service that these people, that these employees put into this district, you know we are sure don't want to miss their experience in college. And I'm sure they'll be wanting to. Any other comments? Hearing none, all who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight, zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion of the following items be approved, 12.1 to 12.1 page eight.
Second, motions have been moved in consecutive. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion's carry eight, zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion of the following items be approved. From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion of the following items be approved, thirteen point one to thirteen point eight, on page nine.
Second, motions have been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Technology, motions of the following items be approved, fourteen point one to fourteen point four, on page ten.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion that the following items be approved, fifteen point one, board school directors approve the change orders from A D U Services for the sidewalk curb concrete services, total additional cost of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, paid for the district funds as follows, for Tonicum and Prospect Park Schools, eight thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, Norwood School, seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and for Tonicum School, eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion sixteen point one to sixteen point three.
Second, motions have been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion seventeen, the board school directors approve Robert Kelly to attend the two thousand and twenty-four P A S P A Annual Conference in Altitude, P A, February twenty-eighth to March first, two thousand and twenty-four, at a cost not to exceed seven hundred dollars to be paid for the district fund.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion eighteen, the board school directors approve Rebecca Angley to attend the two thousand and twenty-four P D E Status Summit from March eleventh to the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at a cost not to exceed one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to be paid for the district fund.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion nineteen, the board school directors cast their votes for the following Pennsylvania School Board Association slate candidates as follows. Two thousand and twenty-four President-elect David Heine, Vice President Sabrina Backer. Two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-six P S B A Treasurer Karen Beckpulle, two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-six Western at-large Marcia Pletta, two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five Section Three Advisor Eric Murray, P S B A Insurance Trust trustees Marion Neal and Michael Pacimetto, Forum Steering Committee Matt Dan Ziegler, Jamie Lynn Zimmerowski, and Jennifer Davidson.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board, comment? Yes, Mr. Evans.
I'd like to thank Mr. Shabon for reviewing these candidates and giving these recommendations to the board.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty, the board school directors approve the facility license agreement with Wyner University for use of the university pool for the high school swimming, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four season at a cost of two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, ninety dollars, to be paid from district funds pending solicitor review.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-one, that the board school directors approve the facility use adaptation of Chichester School District for use of their swimming facilities at no cost to the district for the two thousand and twenty-three, one point four season.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-two, that the board school directors approve the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Title III Consortium Memorandum of Understanding for the two thousand and twenty-three, one point four school year.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-three, to accept the engagement letter from the law firm of Sereni Perkins as Special Education Counsel for the Universal District at an hourly rate of two hundred and five dollars and one hundred dollars for legal assistance time. Disappointment will be in effect from, from until the organization meetings to be held during the first week of December, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
And the remaining five motions are roll call motions. Motion twenty-four, that the board school directors approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Interbar Education Association and the Interbar School District for the purpose of asynchronous Spanish four class of two thousand and twenty-three, one point four.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Wilken, yes. Mr. Willis?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-five, that the board school directors approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Interbar Education Support Professionals Association and the Interbar School District to allow the Class One to Seven the opportunity to purchase employer-provided medical and/or prescription insurance.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-six, that the board school directors approve the district comprehensive plan effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, pending review.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board?
Quick comment, Mr. Phelps.
Yes.
First, I just want to thank Dr. Ekman for all of her effort on this one and the next couple of motions. It's a lot of time and energy that you put into those items. I also want to urge parents to go onto the website to review the documents, because, you know, that is our guiding principles for the next couple of years as well. We align a lot of those goals to Mrs. Riley's goals, and then what we vote on throughout the year typically aligns to those. So, you know, I think it's really important for everyone to review that and provide any input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Storm like thunder, I echo it.
I apologize, Mr. Evans.
No problem, no problem. Can't thank Dr. Ekman enough because she does so much for us.
He's a team actor.
She was my teacher, so I, I should take credit for me sitting over here at the ball.
She did a great job. Any other comments? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yeah.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-seven, that the board school directors approve the district educator induction plan effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-nine, pending review.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, again, roll call, please.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes, motion carries eight zero, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-eight, that the board school director approve the district professional development plan Act Forty-eight effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, pending review.
Second, motion has been moved in seconded, whether there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes, motion carries eight zero. And that is the last motion here. But let me know when is there any old business? Hearing none, we will now hear from our superintendent, Miss Ryan.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just a little piece of new business. I really apologize for interjecting. I had meant to do this at work session, but unfortunately I was unable to end work session Monday night. One of the plans on working on going forward for the Interbar Education, in conjunction with the Interbar Education Foundation, is to put together a fundraising effort that would provide naming opportunities, naming rights opportunities for people in the community to either nominate or participate to name some of our new additions, as well as classrooms, park benches, and maybe even the athletic complex as we go forward. With the fundraising going towards the Interbar Education Foundation, while I have very little detail and very little structure on that yet, I do have guidance from the architectural firm, as well as other schools that I've reached out to. And I just wanted to ask the board's permission to at least move forward with the investigation of that. And then, once it gets fleshed out far enough to provide details, then I would certainly ask for either your support or some part of it may have to come to a vote. But at this point, I'm just looking for permission to move forward.
Myself, I'm fine with that. Rest of the board.
Yes.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Not to put you on hold, Ms. Ryan.
That's quite all right. Anything. I know, I'm good with it. All right, thank you, Mr. Phelps. Today, a select group of fifth graders visited the Philadelphia Airport. The tour included a welcome from the airport COO Keith Brudy, a presentation of the airport's ecosystem by Keisha Lane, the Assistant Director of Community Relations and Outreach. The students also visited one of the airport ramp towers, learned about the beautiful artwork located around the airport, had a question and answer session with operational staff. I was able to participate in this today, and I was very excited considering I haven't been on a field trip in about twenty years. I want to thank the teachers that attended, the principals for helping me to coordinate this, and the wonderful hospitality of the airport personnel. It's really, most of us are just used to going to the airport, getting on a plane, and going somewhere, and not really thinking about what life is like behind the scenes to make sure that people are getting to where they need to be. So it really gave a very different perspective on how important the airport is to our families and this area, because a lot of jobs our families have are at, in some capacity, within the Philadelphia Airport. Lots of job opportunities. So the children were wonderful. We even got complimented by the staff that we were one of the best groups they had through this tour. So that's always, you know, I'm always proud to hear that. The college fall fair is tomorrow evening at the high school from six thirty to eight o'clock. So if you have a student and you're starting to begin that process of looking at colleges, please stop by the high school and visit some of the colleges and other opportunities for students. Also, the Interbar Theater will proudly be presenting the comedy game of Tiaras. It's about an aging king of a magic, an aging king of a magical kingdom who decides to split his empire between his three daughters. I think that sounds very much like another hit series, Game of Thrones. I did never watch that, but I hear it's an adaptation of King Lear, and I'm looking forward to seeing it. So please check out the website for ticket information and updates. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Do we have any comments from any board members? Hearing none, I would just like to give a shout out to Ms. Oswell. I attended an award ceremony there a month or so ago. I can't tell you how excited the kids were. The job that her and her vice principal did, it was just, it was electrifying to see the kids coming in, how excited they were, and how excited she was and the vice principal. And of course, she gave the vice principal the job of naming all the names. So, but he did a great job, let me tell you. So I just wanted to give you a little shout out.
Thank you.
All righty. Please visit the Interbar School District website at www.inverbSD.org for further information on the meetings listed above. On Monday, November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, the finance committee meeting with the G B O meeting immediately following will be held virtually at seven P M. The next work session of the Interbar Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P M. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors will be held at the Administration Building on Thursday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P M. On Tuesday, November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, a capital improvement committee will be held virtually at six thirty P M. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.